Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members. What you have before you is a recommendation of progress. The mayor said fifty thousand for the appropriate general reserve. And this is for us to participate with four other cities to look at studies for the SR-710. You may recall back, it seems like just yesterday, but early in 2013, when council had this item come before them at that time, they asked that to look at opportunities to coordinate with our neighboring cities on these studies. Since that time, we've been working with the city of Glendale, La Cañada Flintridge, Sierra Madre, and South Pasadena. And the city managers have been getting together regularly to look at what studies we could combine together and how we would also go about paying for them. We all did express, all the cities did express a need to actually look at the EIR, which is available in the spring of 2014. And our goal has been to be prepared when it comes out to have consultants already onboard. So what we've done is, between the five cities, we've done a memorandum of understanding. We're estimating at this point the cost of what we believe the studies will be is about $250,000. Each city has agreed to pay an equal share, and so our share will be $50,000. And that's what's before you. The studies that we're going to look at at this time, we've identified that we should hire consultants in the transportation impact analysis, air quality, health impact analysis, legal CEQA, the soils, geology, and seismology, and then the tunnel safety and security. So at this time, what we're asking for is the recommendation for the $50,000. But I would also like to mention that this city has requested, and so have the other five, the other four cities, that the review period for the EIR be extended from ninety days to one hundred and twenty days. At this point, Metro has acknowledged receiving the request, but they have not yet gotten back to us with the final response. So at this point, that's the next consultation.
We have several parts for public comment. If council members have specific or what I would call technical questions about the proposal, they could be presented at this time. Mr. Madison?
Well, Mayor, I intend to move this staff recommendation. And just so, if the speakers want to speak to this, I'm hoping that the third time is a charm, and I would like the council to consider once again taking an opposition position to the tone. And I don't know if we could adopt a resolution tonight, but I think certainly in connection with this item, we could discuss it.
Mayor, members of the council, I would strongly recommend that that be agendized for a future meeting. The way the item is listed on the agenda wouldn't necessarily give the public notice that that is something that's likely to be discussed and considered tonight.
And again, I suppose if there's an appetite on the council to discuss it, then we should. It's good to know that tonight.
Let's go to the public comment, and then we'll see where we are as a council on issues relating to the SR-710 freeway proposal. The first speaker is Michael Cornwell. And the next would be Bill Urban. After Mr. Urban would be Alex Nasseri.
Mr. Mayor, council people, council persons. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Madison for the leadership he has shown from the very beginning on this matter. And I hope that the matter that he has just asked to be considered, that all of you will endorse, the concern that we in West Pasadena particularly have about this issue. There's been a lot of talk about dirt lately, but in connection with Pahamanga. At one point, it's been made clear in terms of this 710 extension, is that the construction will require removal of 200 billion cubic feet of dirt filling 450,000 truckloads. That means 128 truckloads of dirt transported through our area every single day, seven days a week, for ten years. Now, I just turned eighty in December and will be ninety in ten years, so I'm not going to be here to enjoy the fruits of this thing. But I would hope you would join the other cities in making this $50,000 contribution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Urban. I'm president of the West Pasadena Residents Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of the association. I sent you a letter this morning by email saying that WPRA is grateful for the actions we are taking to prepare for review of the SR-710 and more study environmental impact report. We hope and trust that you will approve the $50,000 allocation tonight. In addition, we ask you to direct a high priority and substantial resources to passing its own review of the impact report. As mentioned in our letter of September 12th last year, the impact report is expected to be luminous, technical, and complex, with five major alternatives identified and these six sub options for the highway tunnel alternatives. On my characterization, that is a solution looking for a problem. Many of these alternatives will have severe and permanent impacts on our city, our businesses, especially Old Pasadena, and the quality of life for residents. The city of Pasadena itself must evaluate the impact report for local Pasadena impacts. You should make full use of the substantial expertise available in the city staff and city commissions, especially in planning and traffic. No one else is going to look after it in Pasadena's interest. With these thoughts in mind, WPRA respectfully requests that you approve the $50,000 appropriation. Direct Pasadena city staff and commissions independently analyze areas where Pasadena is uniquely affected, including local traffic disruptions, which Metro seems to minimize, impact on local businesses, even though that's not part of the EIR, is very real, and reasons why impacts at Metro list as unavoidable environmental impacts are either avoidable or do not outweigh the benefits of the highway tunnel options. And finally, we ask you to provide a process for Pasadena residents to submit comments to the city as well as to Metro. We trust the city of Pasadena much more than Metro. Remember Metro's performance at the council meeting held at the convention center last year? That's why. One other thing that was pointed out to me after sending the email to you, the empty egg board leaders who are pressing for the highway tunnel are going to be turned out soon. Supervisor Antonovich, Malina, and Kanavi will be gone before ground is broken under even the most optimistic projections. Pasadena will have to rely on their successors, whoever they may be. This is too big a risk for a long, onerous, unsettling project that will have profound effects on us, our children, and our children's children. As shown by the New Year's festivities we celebrated earlier, Pasadena sets a very high standard for quality of life. No one else is going to look after Pasadena. It's up to you. Thank you for considering our request. If I had just a few more seconds, what regarding Councilmember Madison's comment about opposing the tunnel options, WPRA has looked at it, but that light just went off. Has long been opposed to all the tunnel options. We see no advantage for Pasadena or for the local communities, and unquestionable benefits even for the region. Thank you.
Mr. Nasseri?
I am Alex Nasseri, Mayor Bogart's council. Thank you for having me tonight. First, before I introduce agenda topic, I just want to say thank you for, really appreciate living in such a progressive city. And I don't think anything that we did at the parade was an abomination. I think it was just a sign about forward our city is. Now, as a board member of San Rafael, a member of the association, I want to address this agenda 15, telling you guys that we do support the $50,000 that the council is deciding on whether putting towards the fund. However, despite our support of the five-city consortium analysis of the EIR, we are very mindful that Pasadena is by far the most important city of the five, and more importantly, we sit at the end, the terminus of the tunnel, which leads us to have specific local impacts in Pasadena. Those impacts include air pollution, traffic congestion, economic impact that can be tremendous at Old Town, health impacts to the residents and schools. And we also need to look at mitigation measures that will decrease these local impacts. And to do so, we would like to have an independent review and analysis of any EIR graph, as we know that Los Angeles Metro is strongly in favor of a tunnel option. And we like to see a detailed plan that includes a public comments that is open and transparent, that involves a community, and lets us go ahead and put our input into the response to the EIR, and that response itself become public to both, to both the community and send to the metro. I just also want to say that, as you all know, that SRNA was, took the lead in galvanizing the opposition to the 710 freeway extension. And I will say this, sitting at the meetings, there is no other topic as important to the SRNA and the members of the community. And I think, I want you to all know that there is no lack of energy now that they're up in potential ends of 710 freeway. The tunnel itself will galvanize the community once again. And they have told me that they want to reach outside of District Six and try to fund and educate outside the community. And while there may be legal loopholes that the city will be, I would say, one last thing, that I want to make sure that they, that everyone outside of District Six understands that the repercussions will be felt at the ballot box in the future if the tunnel goes through. Thank you.
Let's turn to Sarah Gavitt. Thereafter, Audrey O'Kelly. And then Ann Kelly.
Honorable Mayor Bogart and Pasadena City Council, I hope and trust that you will approve the agenda item tonight, which allocates $50,000 to support the five-city review of the SR-710 draft EIR/ES. In addition, I strongly urge that you direct your city staff and commissions to actively participate in the draft EIR/ES review process. The proposed tunnel options will have a very large and permanent impact on our city. They propose to bring 136,000 new vehicles to Pasadena each day, many of them trucks, and will result in years of construction that will disrupt not only our traffic, but the businesses of Old Pasadena. At minimum, the Transportation Advisory Commission and the Planning Commissions should participate in this review process. However, I also encourage you to add the Environmental Advisory Commission to that list. This commission's purpose is to advise you and make policy recommendations that support the goals and objectives of our city's environmental charter. It also monitors and guides our city's Green City Action Plan. Pasadena's Green City Charter states that Pasadena will be an environmental advocate and will cultivate superior environmental standards. Furthermore, it states that the city believes that the protection of the urban and natural environment is a social responsibility and a fundamental obligation of a democratic government. Finally, it states that an ecologically impoverished and wounded environment adversely impacts human health. That you have yet to oppose the new eight-lane freeway that will bring extensive pollution and health issues to our city. This counter to this charter, instead of supporting a new freeway, I ask you to be an advocate for clean public transportation, such as light rail and a 21st century bus system. These are sustainable solutions that work for future generations. Also, you should not make our city sacrificial lamb for the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, when LA County officials have not even considered putting cargo on rail at the ports rather than on diesel trucks. Clean cargo transport starting at the ports would benefit all of LA County residents and clean up the 710 corridor, which is currently the dirtiest roadway in the entire country. Please follow Pasadena's Green City Charter and vote to oppose the 710 extension. Thank you.
Audrey O'Kelly?
Here's Bogart, City Council members and staff. I'll just start out by saying that Pasadena has absolutely nothing to gain from the 710 tunnel project. It's been in the works for many, many years. The projects, many options and alternatives that produce, that induce a changes that serve to confuse citizens attempting to understand the implications of the tunnel for our city. Change, the most recent changes were announced at the metro, by metro, at the Technical Adviser Committee meeting in November 2013, and they're also bad for Pasadena. Change number one, the one tunnel option with and without trucks. They advertise it as half the cost and the impact, however, then they go on to say that there will be a second tunnel to be constructed at a later time. So this option would merely drag out the decade-long demolition and construction cycle. Change number two, the raised tunnel profile option would open the tunnel further south near California Boulevard. The new grade and higher profile would produce more severe environmental impacts for our community. The numerous senior citizen, hospital, and school populations, and of course, those living in nearby single-family homes and apartment buildings. Change number three, adding an additional ramp at Del Mar. Metro admits the option will increase local street congestion, have a larger environmental impact, and will cost an additional $47 million. No matter what option they decide to build, the 710-210 connection will dump thousands of additional cars and trucks through our city and onto the 210. Metro has cited 180,000 vehicles on this already congested freeway. There are powerful forces determined to build this tunnel. The unsighted sub and hundreds of deteriorating single-family homes that were left in our city for decades were there was not for nothing. So I urge you to please approve the $50,000 appropriation for the five-day EIR/ES consortium, and direct the Pasadena city staff and commissions to independently analyze areas where Pasadena is uniquely affected. And this would include the local traffic disruptions and the negative environmental impacts, and also the loss of local business during and after the construction, because while it's not a part of the EIR, it will be a very real consequence of this project for our city. Anyway, I'll close again by saying Pasadena has nothing to gain from the 710 tunnel that Metro and Caltrans hope to construct in our city. Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Next speaker is Ann Kelly. And then Sylvia Plummer. And then Nancy Vandenhout.
Good evening, Mayor Bogart and the City Council, City Council members. I am on the San Rafael, Neighborhood Association Board, and thank you for this opportunity to address your questions. I agree to the vote yes on the agenda item number 15 to appropriate $50,000 for a very important regional review of the EIR when it is passed, when it is released. I have read the response that WPRA received from the city regarding how the draft EIR/ES process would be addressed. And I'm encouraged that the city plans to participate in the regional review. However, there are some shortfalls to the city's plan as it is currently conceived. I noticed, for example, there is no commitment to accept inputs from Pasadena residents. There is no commitment to have Pasadena, our Pasadena commissions participate in the draft EIR/ES review. At a minimum, the Transportation Commission and the Planning Commission should be involved. There is no commitment to assess the economic impact to our city. I understand that is not a part of the EAR process. However, the city needs to do this for its own benefit, especially the impact of a ten-year construction schedule on old Pasadena businesses. My final comment is a question to you. Are you city council members willing to accept judgments that will be directed at you if the tunnel option is implemented? If not, please take a firm stand now and vote against the tunnel option before it becomes a reality. Otherwise, you will be seen as part of the problem due to your unwillingness to stand united against it. Thank you.
Ms. Plummer?
Good evening to you all. I'm not going to spend a lot of time repeating what's already been said. It is important that you know that the draft EIR will be coming out this March. It's just a couple months. We've been till March, April time, right, based on what Metro has put out. So all I'm asking you right now is to please approve this $50,000 expenditure. Thank you.
We have one more card. And if council members who are waiting to speak are agreed, we'll take that comment and then go from there. And that speaker is Nancy Vandenhout.
I've been a resident of Pasadena for 35 years. I ask you to vote yes to approve the $50,000 and join the five-city draft consortium. Joining the five-city consortium is not enough. You also need to actively direct city staff and commissions to participate in the review process to ensure a thorough review of the impact to our special city and its unique assets. You should vote to oppose the tunnel, which will have devastating effects on our wonderful city. The city of Pasadena has formally requested of Metro a minimum 120-day review period for the EIR, but Metro has not agreed to it. Metro is meeting on Wednesday, January 15th at 2:30 PM, and there will be a motion. We were, I think, handed this information. There will be a motion to extend the 60-day public review period on the EIR to 120 days, which you have requested. This motion may not pass. This meeting may be the only opportunity and a unique opportunity for the city of Pasadena to impact this important issue to extend the 60-day public review period for the EIR. We need someone in authority who is part of this city government to attend this important Metro meeting this coming Wednesday and make a public comment supporting Aaron and Jerry's motion. I strongly urge you to take this issue very seriously. I ask the members of the Pasadena City Council to do everything in their power to oppose this tunnel and to seriously consider Steve Madison's motion. And to please take five minutes, whatever, to read what is going to pass around to you, the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reference has been made to the memorandum that was passed around in recent minutes from Sylvia Plummer, and refers to a motion pending before the Metro Board, the Planning and Programming Committee, which is suggested is reported to be scheduled for hearing on Wednesday at 2:30 PM. This council might wish to be represented through an elected official. That should be the subject of discussion and improve, perhaps, a member of our staff as well. With that, the public comment has been concluded. And the question is, what are the wishes of the council? Mr. Nasseri is waiting, and then Jackie Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I will defer to Mr. Madison's and second his motion when he makes a motion and new staff's recommendation. I have a question, though. The $50,000 that Pasadena will be contributing, is it going to a certain part of that, those five areas, to, I guess, to pay for?
The way it all is, in fact, I think I might have another slide up here. There it goes. Is this is what we've estimated the cost of each of the consultants, and that's why we got the $250,000. And each of the cities agreed to take the lead on one of the items. Pasadena will take the lead on finding a consultant for the legal and the CEQA. But again, so this is what we're estimating the cost of. We have, so we figure a ballpark of $250,000 should be sufficient. If at the end it costs less, the money will go back evenly to all the cities. In the event it costs more, we may be back. Thank you.
Jackie?
I'm happy to support the motion tonight, assuming that it does not include Councilmember Madison's request to have a discussion tonight about the city council taking the permanent, taking the position on the tunnel option itself. I know that perhaps we may have a date, a calendar date for that discussion later on, later on in this year or in the coming weeks. Tonight's action is an extraordinary project and extraordinary circumstance that warrants our expenditure and authorization tonight. And I know many in the community, especially from District Six, have asked what my position is on the ongoing request that the city council oppose the tunnel option. But I continue to believe that the city council or any council member taking a permanent position on any of the options much as the tunnel prior to receipt of all the available information that we may receive through this EIR and other outlets, including the information that we received from the report tonight, from the report that would be generated by the various consultants, sets a bad precedent for any of the number of issues that this council has been asked to consider, both in the past and in the future that may be coming before the council. Perhaps that's not a wise political position, considering the tenure of, and the high stakes that are involved in this metro project that may or may not come to fruition. However, that's a personal practice that I take with regard to all the issues that have become before this council and as I take them into consideration, and at the end of the day, make a decision that I feel will be in the best interest of the city of Pasadena. That said, rest assured that I've heard the many concerns that have been expressed, both written and verbal, with regard to the tunnel option. And I have taken the time to meet with Metro officials on my own time to express the concerns that I've heard from both WPRA and the East Royal Neighborhood Association. I look forward to receiving the results of the Metro Caltrans EIR study, to receiving the results of our own analysis that will be generated through this, this action item tonight, and the continued discussion that I'm sure this council and the many stakeholders here in the city of Pasadena and elsewhere are sure to have in the coming months and possibly years, and then make a decision on where I feel it's in the best interest of District Line and the city of Pasadena as a whole. So with that, I'm prepared to support the action tonight for the allocation. I did have one question with regard to if the consultants exceed the $250,000, what is, do we have to take another action to complete the analysis, or does this just contemplate the $50,000?
The recommendation, as it stands tonight, just is for the $50,000. As I mentioned earlier, if, if at the end, either one of the consultants will go tonight, we'll be back, ask you for additional resources. This only does the $50,000 for tonight.
And how will the consultants be selected?
Good point. Right now, the city of South Pasadena has agreed to be the fiduciary, and we've all talked about the fact that we all have, all five cities have recommendations for how we do our processes. So we're going to look at those and how to... So we're going to look at those and, and so on at least a process. It will, it will include, I'm going out to bid, and that's why we're starting right now, because we do it, given all the cities, it will take time.
Thank you.
Mr. Madison?
Mayor, just as a preparatory matter, I do want to, and it sounds like it may be required, your threat of violence, we have to separate the issue of the opposition agenda item, so I wanted to address Jackie's concerns. That's not part of the motion that I am making now to approve the staff recommendation. I did want to just clarify a couple of things that the speaker's raised. One is just for the clerk and you, Mayor, can the letters that we received from WPR, the San Rafael Labor Association, and Sylvia Plummer become part of the record tonight? And then I do think it was a good suggestion, thinking it had been served out that made it, to also include EAC in this process in some way. So I'm wondering if that needs to be part of the motion, or what staff's reaction is to that?
I think the bigger question for us is whether there's sufficient time, you know, to be able to put the item on the agenda and get feedback from the transportation planning, EAC, or others, something we could certainly look at, but it's up to Metro as to whether they extend the timeline. And if we have 60 days per se to do all of the analysis, there isn't going to be time to take that analysis through to the commissions. But we certainly could look at whether we should simply agendize and create an opportunity for those commissions to be able to provide independent comments.
And even if it weren't, you know, formal agendizing and the like, you could share information with the members of the commission, and they might weigh in in what way that they chose, and everything, so. Well, I would just ask you to make sure that you include that body as one of the bodies that you consider as we go forward. And a number of the speakers talked about wanting to address the unique impacts to Pasadena. I think Dr. Masuri was correct when he said we're the most important city. We might not want to start the five-city meeting by making that a problem, but certainly we agree with that. And in terms of the most devastation, I think that would be a fair statement also. But I guess for me, it was sort of implicit that our approach would be on the unique and dramatic effects on Pasadena.
What's interesting is this group studies it, they want to look at and identify any and all. And so whether they're specific to Pasadena or any other jurisdiction, they want to put together the totality of the impacts to make sure that there's sequel comments in that regard. So I think we can rest assured that as many comments and impacts that can be identified for Pasadena, and I tend to agree with you, our impacts are probably the most significant, that they will be incorporated to the best of our, best of our ability. And then again, that's going to be all dependent upon the timeframe. It took Metro, you know, billions of dollars and years to do this analysis, and we're going to have maybe at best 60 days to review it all and comment that. I think one of the speakers had also commented on, could we become a repository for public comment? And that may be a way to provide a good supplement, being able to get input so that we can incorporate some of that and feed that actually back to the group or back. So we will look at that. I think that was a good.
I mean, in my, in my lights, the commitment to spend the $50,000 as part of this effort as a starting point, it would be implicit that the direction you're being given is to represent the unique impact of Pasadena and make sure that it's, it's addressed, you know, fully. So I think the motion would be to approve the staff recommendation. Mayor, that would like to be heard on the other after we vote on this one.
We've, we've submitted a formal request to the Metro for an extension of the 60-day period to 120 days, and we received, as everyone might remember, a letter back from Mr. Blakely, the CEO of Metro, indicating that the letter's been received and that they're doing the consultations with Caltrans that are necessary to determine that question. And I think the letter said they will be notifying us of the response to that request prior to the issuance of the EIR. And we don't know how much before the issuance of the EIR that might, that might be. Mr. Kennedy is waiting.
The reason why this is so important is because this, in my view, is an execution of our fiduciary duty to find out what the facts are before we take a definitive position. And I think, as is the case in my view, whether we need to find out the facts that relates to the need for pumping services or water and power, the needs for finding out what the facts are related to the possibility of oversight of the police department by some civilian mechanism. In this case, finding out what are the true impacts to such a grand project on the sustainability of a small city like the city of Pasadena. So it's easy for me to support this motion because it helps me do my job as a city council member. I'm not persuaded in the least bit, in the least bit, by veiled threats of any kind. What's more important is finding a factual basis upon which to stand on, and you do that by gathering the facts. I am concerned that it appears that the effort is somewhat late in the game in terms of how much time we have for the selection of the contractor or contractors who will perform the actual work for us and make recommendations or at least make findings that will help us take a position as a city council. But I gladly support the motion that is before us tonight.
Thank you, John. Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. I didn't quite get the two questions, here the answers to the two questions about, first of all, the, the fact that we're, we would be part of this group to get this assistance is one thing. But then in terms of the, the city's comments to the EIR, will there be city analysis and review separate from these consultant recommendations? So it's, will it go through our, on top of whatever these people, you know, recommend? Will it get another review by our own internal staff, particularly, you know, relevant departments, planning, transportation, etc., public works, etc.?
It's anticipation that, yes, that will be, this will be added enhancement for us. There's a whole process where each of the significant departments will do their due diligence review. And so the information that we'll gather from the consultants will only add to our review.
So this is really supplementing that we're doing, that we're doing. Okay, good. Then the, the other question I had is sort of, is Mr. Madison brought it up, is it, it was brought up by one of the residents as to, you know, what is the best way for Pasadena residents to have their individual and in some cases collective comments brought into, you know, received into the EIR, and if possible, they could be expanded on by our own city staff? As we've seen a lot of times, people bring out, you know, bring up comments that maybe we hadn't thought about, or, you know, their own particular experiences. So how, will they have to just go directly in written comments to the EIR, or will, will there be some process through which sort of all of the Pasadena communities' comments are, are sort of either filtered through the city council or gathered in some way?
Well, I think at this point, they are directed to go straight to the, to Metro. But as the city manager said, we could look at us being a repository. And then what you're saying is, again, a lot of, a lot of times of comments that we receive from our community does raise perhaps an additional issue.
Right.
It all, again, depends on the timing. I mean, we'll have 60 days at a minimum rate, we know right now to review this. The community will have that same time. It all depends, can we get them in within 30 days so we could look at them and continue to do our due diligence? It, as we've said before, there's not much time.
Right. So everyone has to get their comments in at the earliest possible date so they can be aggregated the most meaningful way. But then if we do receive an extension, that would provide an opportunity for a more comprehensive approach to both sort of the, you know, the higher level comments and then coming from the ground up in the community. Is that right?
I think so. And then it looks like, the way I see it, it'd be almost a dual, so middle, make sure you get it straight to management, but then also get it to the city.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
The experience we're having currently with the Hahamunga DEIR is something of a precedent, it seems to me, because we're certainly open to the comments of the members of the public who have an interest in that subject, and we've taken them into account as we've reacted so far to that very important and frankly threatening project. But at the same time, everyone who has speak, has spoken to the council is free and maybe is wise to have their comments in writing submitted directly through the EIR comment process to Metro so that they establish their standing as a stakeholder, as an author of comments in that formal way as well as help, helps us formulate our reaction to what's going on. If there are no other comments, we have a motion pending to approve the staff recommendation. Are there any objections to that motion? There being none, the motion is approved. I want to thank the members of the community who have come tonight and waited longer than they perhaps expected to, to offer their comments. A number of questions have been raised about how Pasadena will successfully and effectively operate in regard to the comment period. We want it to be longer than 60 days, but one way or the other, we're going to have to pull ourselves together and offer a full range of comments as effectively and as fully stated as possible in order to make a record with Metro in regard to the EIR review. Mr. Madison?
Mayor, I think two other items, maybe the easier one first, in terms of your request, your solicitation for a member of this body to attend. I'm not sure that I'll be available, if I can make myself available, if I happen to attend that meeting. And Mayor, you're available.
I have looked at my calendar, but in the end, I would do my best to be the one if, if no one else is available. Are there others who might be willing to take that assignment and tap on the shoulder?
Wednesday afternoon?
Wednesday afternoon at 2:30.
Mayor, I might be available if you could, I would of course defer to you, but in the event, I'm downtown, and so I could work my way over.
And obviously, we'll look to the assistance of our staff, Julie and Freda and others for kind of the briefing and background. It would be helpful to be as effective as we possibly can be.
And then I did want to, as I alluded earlier, wanted to see if my colleagues would support agendizing a resolution to oppose the tunnel. I just would note that on two prior occasions, we brought, or at least the discussion of a resolution on this topic to the council at a time when we did not have a full council due to Chris's leaving us to join the assembly. We only had seven members, and that was on December 10, 2012, I made a motion to formally oppose the SR 710 tunnel option as an alternative that Metro was considering as part of this environmental process. That motion failed four aye votes and three no votes. And then on February 11, I once again stated my strong preference that the council formally opposed the tunnel, and there did not appear to be support at that time. Again, we did not have a full council at that time. So, you know, I think, and John, just with regard to your comments, and I, I would ask you to not put too much weight on, on the passion that people feel about this issue. I hear what you're saying about the comments, about how people will have memory about this, and I know they will, but truly, people are terrified by this. It is a terrifying prospect that would absolutely render Pasadena an entirely different city. And it's with no small amount of irony that we started this evening talking about an event that takes place in West Pasadena every year, events plural, that make us, you know, the epicenter of the globe on New Year's Day. This would absolutely destroy that. This is like a dystopian nightmare. So I would ask you to look beyond, you know, perhaps the passion that I or others, you know, speak about it with. So Mayor, I don't know, normally we just request items to come to the council, you know, through your honor and through the city manager, but, you know, on this one, given that we've had, had two prior discussions, I guess I'd just like to know if my colleagues would support the idea of agendizing that, recognizing that if nothing's changed, then it might not be fruitful to do that.
The most recent estimates that have come to my attention for issuance of the draft EIR are March, as we mentioned a time or two this evening. And I touch on that because I believe that a number of people, including perhaps council members, believe that the availability of the draft EIR, which will provide a fixed database of information, not necessarily the totality of information that will appear in the final report and will be ultimately ferred out as a result of the comment process, but it will provide a fixed database of information that is reasonably comprehensive. Millions and millions of dollars have been spent, and to put that EIR together would be helpful to have in hand before being called upon in a formal action to oppose the tunnel. So that is, that is one consideration. I don't know if others have reactions. Mr. Kennedy? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to address my colleagues' comments. You know, Steve, I really appreciate your passion on the issue, and I also appreciate the heartfelt comments that have come from the audience, the public, and those who are most impacted by the discussion of what could come. So I want to be very clear that in no way the passion that has been exhibited by you or members of the public, those who have spoken at the podium tonight, has any way given me pause. It's encouraged me. This is the democratic process, and we need to hear from those who are concerned about an issue that is actually going to impact the health of the city and the lives of the people who are immediately surrounding that area. However, having said that, I believe that we are looking for a factual predicate upon which to make a decision, and I believe it may be premature to take a position at this point.
Well, you know, there was a famous jurist, Bob Dullant, who said that you don't need a weatherman to tell which way the winds blow. And I think for, for many of us, that, that describes this issue, that the study's not needed. needed, more information isn't needed. I mean, look at the controversy we're having over Hahamunga, which, as Mr. Cornwell pointed out, would be a fraction of the work that would happen here right through the central part of our city. So, but I, I know the city attorney is going to get it.
But you're not suggesting that you don't support the motion, that you just may move the staff recommendation?
I think we, well, for my lights, I, and the motion already passed, so we fight, you know, house to house, trench to trench, hand-to-hand combat, we fight in every front we can on this, so.
Are there other comments on the question that Mr. Madison has raised?
This is one of your paid big bucks, Mayor. Can you get me this out?
Well, my, my sense is that we're so close to, to March that it might strengthen the position of each of us and enhance the outcome that, that you were advocating and that I have supported in a prior motion to plan to have a council consideration very, very soon after the draft EIR becomes available. That completes that matter for tonight. Thanks to our staff and to all of the other cities that are participating in this five-city consortium or group because it will make sense to the taxpayers for us to cooperate in this way and to have a series of studies done on an economical basis as a foundation, if not the totality of our public, of our comments offered on the EIR. We turn then to item 16.